Hey Janet. Hi. Wait. I think it's muted. Oh, sorry, lost you. Where'd you go? There you go.
Hi Nancy, how are you?
Hi, good. How are you doing Diane?
I've been in for over two weeks, so I feel really good because I had a stomach bug.
Oh.
And they were trying to figure out what I had. And I was so worried about somebody coming near me and getting with COVID-19.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, you know what? I just remembered something. I forgot to bring a flag. Let me go grab a flag because we're gonna do a pledge at one point. I left it in my car. I'll be right back.
All right. I have a question. Can I share this on e-news or no? You will be sharing it or recording it?
I'm recording it, but I don't know about, I don't know how to share it, but yeah, it's a public meeting. But we're only just gonna go open the meeting, do a closed session resolution, and then we're all gonna sign off.
Oh, so you're not gonna have a public meeting?
After we come back from the closed session, which could be an hour later.
I see. Okay.
So you know, I'm still trying to figure out how this works. This was easier to do at the office.
Oh, here, I have a share screen here. Let's see what that means.
Close to, here we go. Okay. Alright, I'm gonna go look for a flag. I'll be right back.
Okay. Hi Catherine. Hello, Mr. Cobb.
How are you?
Okay, how are you doing?
I'm good. I am good.
That's good.
We gotta get ready to, very busy night tonight.
Yes, so I hear you're going to close session Nancy mentioned. Initially, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
There she is.
I just wanted to go grab a flag for the pledge. Mark's are always prepared.
Yep. Let me see.
So my laptop does have a camera.
Okay. All right. Can you hear me Nancy? Can you hear me good?
I can hear you very well.
Okay, just making sure.
Oh Catherine's there too. Hi Catherine.
No, that's Diane Janson.
No, I have Catherine Glenn on too, but she has no audio.
Locked out.
Oh, there she is, okay. Oh, she hung up. Oh, okay. Oh, we'll figure it out.
Um, okay. So what are we, we're gonna go here, we're gonna open a meeting, and then we're gonna go into closed session?
Yeah.
So we're gonna, so, so we're gonna go out of Zoom?
Yeah, everyone's gonna leave the meeting and then you already sent you information for the conference for the close? I'm gonna dial into that number. That one is just pure phone call.
Right. Okay, alright. And then we'll come back and we'll do what we gotta do and then get back to work. Very busy, very busy times.
So does that mean Nancy, we just stay, will stay on Zoom?
Yeah.
Until, oh, such time, okay.
Do you wanna just hang out for an hour or so? You think it'll take an hour?
No.
No, not, not even that?
No.
There you go. So just hang.
It's not gonna take long. It's just a couple of things and then we'll be back, we'll be right back to public session. So it's not gonna, it's not gonna take long.
Alright, good.
Not unless, I can only speak for myself, but not unless other people have some other things we have to deal with, so.
Okay.
You know, but I, my, my goal is to move it along, so.
Okay, great.
That's what, that's what we'll do. We'll move it along.
I think the longest part is gonna be me reading this open public meeting statement.
Well, right, right.
That was a long statement.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be long.
Yep.
Now, there's a way, I don't know how to do it, but I know the Board of Education meeting, the Zoom, someone put on Englewood News so that people could watch it.
Oh, I don't know how to do that.
Yeah, I don't know how to do that. I'll have to find that out.
You'll have, well, you, when, when, when we go into closed session, maybe you can find that out. So when we come back, you can put it back on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just learning how to use this program. I just got it like a few days ago, so it's, it's been experimenting for now. We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Catherine, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you just fine.
Okay, good.
Hi Catherine.
Hi Diane.
How are you?
I'm okay thanks. How are you doing?
Pretty good. Thank you for asking. Yeah.
Oh dear. That's the best part, seeing everyone's animal.
Yeah. I quickly cleaned my kitchen because I didn't know what part would pop up.
Oh shit, now I lost, I lost the video.
Oh, I still see you.
See you.
We can see you Charles.
It must be on your end. Do you have like a timer for like a sleep mode?
I clicked on something else. I clicked on, buh buh buh. Okay, let me see. Okay, here we go.
You're there, okay.
Here we go. There we go. I was, I clicked on the agenda, so that's what happened.
I wonder if I go through this.
Who else, who else is on the meeting? Nobody else to join Nancy?
I have Bill, but he's muted himself and someone named Kurtie.
I don't see them. I don't see them.
I can, oh, they're, they're just blank boxes because they're just audio. There's Michael Cohen. Hi Michael. No audio. There you go, connecting. I should go put some makeup on.
Trying to figure out.
I'm sure the whole thing today about how to join in these video meetings and how to light yourself. Quite interesting.
There's Michael. Michael, I can hear you. Hey Michael. It just says you're connecting to audio. It's, whatever you're doing, it's, just give it a second. It takes a minute. Did you click join audio? There's a button you're supposed to click, join audio. Yep, there you go. Can you hear? Okay, there you go.
Oh, I don't know how I'm gonna figure this out. Michael?
Oh, Michael. Michael, you calling me again?
I don't think, I was, I thought maybe he would know how to do it, but I don't think so.
That's weird because according to this you do. Oh no, you still don't have audio. You have to, there's a button that says join audio when you first join the meeting.
There's also a phone number you can call. Which is what I did.
Yeah, so you're connecting to audio. On my end, it says connecting to audio.
Oh, says connected.
There you go, you're connected, okay.
He just has to unmute himself. Can you unmute?
I unmuted you Michael.
Okay.
So once the meeting starts, I'm gonna mute all the public, just so we know.
Does this, do you have instructions Nancy for this? Is there like a Zoom guide? I see a help here. Maybe I could use that.
I think, yeah, if you go on their website, they have frequently asked questions and how to, I actually was, someone was telling me you can do backgrounds because I said I have a messy kitchen and they said put a virtual background, so I gotta figure out how to do that. I can look like.
Yeah, Nancy, you know, my wife, my wife complains about, look at my, you know, look, look, look what I've got here. Probably every budget book I've never had.
Is that your office?
Yeah. Every budget, like for a decade.
So I'm going to go and help.
We're missing a couple people. We have a quorum if we need to.
We do?
Yeah, we have three council members.
Who's on?
I have Councilwoman Glenn and yourself.
Oh, I don't see Catherine's picture.
Uh, she's just audio, audio.
Yeah, I have my camera taped over.
Yeah.
After watching The Good Wife, I never got over.
There you go. We have Mayor joining us and Councilwoman Rosenberg joining us. Hello.
Hi. Hey guys, how are you? How's everybody?
Good, how are you?
Okay, hope everyone's well. Hi Cheryl. Hi Charles, hey Mike, Nancy.
Hi. I think we're just, Bill is on but audio, but he has himself muted. And I don't know if Councilwoman Hamer is joining us. Someone just joined. There's Councilman Hamer. There you go. And that just leaves us with Jewel.
I just need my phone.
Hey guys, Bill, can you hear me?
Hey Bill, we can hear you.
Yes.
You know, I can see you guys, but for some reason I'm muted, not to be Zoom, but.
Apparently, apparently you've metamorphosized into a green circle.
There you go. I think I just unmuted you. Try that.
Oh, it's unmuted by post, alright.
Yeah, you might, you should hang up your phone because you're echoing.
Are we, are we, who are we, who are we waiting for Jewel?
Jewel, are you on? I have a couple of. I have a phone number that I don't recognize. The number that's muted.
What is it? Like a 341?
No, it's a 55551 number. I don't know if that's Jewel, let me see.
That's a city number.
That's a cellphone number actually.
No, that's not Jewel.
Yeah, she's, she's got a 3410066. We're just waiting for Jewel.
Nice seeing you Cheryl, it's been a while.
Did you change your color hair? You see, I noticed these things.
Yeah.
Diane, yours is.
Hairdresser's open. Yeah, no.
Wayne, how are you feeling?
Yes.
Fine, thanks.
Good, thank God, right?
Yeah, for sure. How's your family?
Beautiful. I have two grandchildren and a wedding supposed to happen in between and those dates are coming up.
Quickly.
Yeah, thank God. But, you know, life goes on and just, this is a surreal experience.
Nancy, did you try to give Jewel a call? Because I'm ready to go.
Let me give her a call. Yeah, I'm gonna call her right now.
Mike, how are you?
Alright, thank God. Getting through like everybody else, you know, easy.
Hi Jewel, are you gonna join us on Zoom? You can't get in?
Tell them just to dial in.
Is on the conference call. You wanna just join us on the closed? Okay.
Tell them she can.
Okay, alright, sounds good. We'll, we'll, we'll be there in a few minutes. Alright, thanks. Okay, Jewel Kent is having issues trying to dial in, so she's just gonna dial into close.
Okay, you ready?
Yep.
I call a special council meeting of March 26, 2020, to order at 7:34 PM. Will everybody rise and join me with the pledge of allegiance? Nancy's got the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
It's America.
And to the Republic.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The city clerk, please read the Open Publics Meeting Act.
Sorry, my cat's freaking out with all this noise. The special meeting was called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Notice of this meeting was sent to the record on March 24, 2020. In addition, a copy of the notice was posted on the website at www.cityofenglewood.org. The purpose of this meeting is for the city council to immediately go into closed session to discuss items permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act, specifically personnel matters, contract negotiations, and matters within the attorney-client privilege. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 at seek, and in consideration of Executive Order Number 103 issued by Governor Murphy on March 9, 2020, declaring a state of emergency and a public health emergency in the state of New Jersey, the City of Englewood does hereby notify the public that to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens while ensuring the continued functioning of government, the city council's special meeting will be held telephonically only. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so by joining the Zoom meeting at, the link is on the website, and/or calling 1-929-205-6099 and followed by the passcode 342-414-273. Individuals calling into this number will be fully able, will be able to fully participate in the meeting, including providing public comment. A non-public dial-in number will be used for closed session. The council reserves the right to discuss an act upon such public business as may be brought up for consideration to the extent that the duration of such public business is not known at this time. Formal action may or may not be taken. Proper notice hasn't been given. The municipal clerk is directed to include the statement in the minutes of this meeting.
Will the city clerk take the roll call please?
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn.
Here.
Councilman Hamer.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Rosenberg.
Here.
Council President Cobb.
Here.
Also present is Mayor Michael Wild, City Attorney Bill Bailey, Interim City Manager Jewel Thompson Chin will be joining the closed session.
Will the city solicitor read the resolution allowing the city council to go in the closed session?
Um, can I ask something before we have that reading, please? Council President Cobb?
Uh, what's that?
I would like to very briefly add three items to the agenda. So I'd like to make a motion to do that.
Yep, Catherine, this meeting's a special meeting to take care of one thing that I planned. So I, three, three, three items on there at the last minute, I, I, I don't know if we can do that.
Uh, well, that could be, I made a motion.
What are the agenda items?
Um, they're, to, for us to have a brief discussion about how we can support the Meals on Wheels program to deliver meals to the 65 seniors who live in Englewood. Also, how we can support the Health Department in disseminating information to residents who are, seem to lack information about the coronavirus. And thirdly, how we can establish a volunteer section on our webpage for people who may want to help on these matters.
Okay, so here's what we're gonna do, really quick. Number one, Meals on Wheels is funded and supported by the county. They should be providing the resources to get those meals out here. That's a funded county program, so if there's a problem with that, the county needs to handle that, not the City of Englewood.
Well, they're overwhelmed at the moment.
That's the county's responsibility. We, we, we're not, what are we gonna do with that? In all fairness, that's the county, that's a funded program. And if the county's not handling their job, then somebody needs to contact the county and see what's the shortcoming on that.
Well, the, the person who was in charge of that.
Yeah, but, but.
I think we're out of order here. I, I think we're out of order here.
No, we're not, because I'm, I'm speaking, we're not out of order. I'm just, I'm, I'm saying to you that that's the county's responsibility, not the City of Englewood. That's what I'm saying to you. If there's a problem, that somebody needs to contact the county and let the county handle that problem. That's a paid, funded, that's a funded program. That's a funded.
But the, the program is overwhelmed because of the.
That's the, that's, that's the program. Where are we gonna get the resources from? This is what I'm saying to you. That's a funded program. Where, where would you propose that we get the resources from? Where are we gonna pay somebody to do that? That's the county's.
So once a week, to have.
Point of order? Point of order, please?
Yes, Councilman Hamer.
Uh, there, there is a motion on the floor to amend the agenda. If, you know, we probably should proceed by parliamentary procedure.
Well, there's, well, to be honest with you, Councilman.
A different type of meeting.
That's right. But here's the thing. I said, let's go into closed session. I, I requested the city, city solicitor to read the, 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 the closed session motion. That's what you go for if, if we're gonna follow the agenda. And we're gonna go forward.
Well, what do we do with the motion on the table? Bill?
Bill, are you there? I think we lost Bill. Bill?
So not hearing anything, you know, let's proceed with the motion that's, that's been proffered. If there's a second and, and the majority votes on it, actually it's unanimous consent to amend the agenda, then we proceed that way. Otherwise, you know, we go into closed session like, like we, like we started.
Well, I didn't hear what all the agenda items were for the, for the motion.
Uh, I'll repeat them. So it's about providing temporary support to help the 65 seniors in Englewood who, who participate in the Meals on Wheels program. It involves having meals picked up once a week and distributed. That's one thing. The second thing is supporting our Health Department in disseminating information to parts of the city that are underserved by web service or going online or, you know, all the communication that's coming that way and maybe doing a leaflet drop. And thirdly, creating some kind of hub where people who want to volunteer can sign up and maybe they can be deployed to help support. Again, these are, you know, extraordinary, extraordinary circumstances. We don't meet again until April 7th. And I think some of these things should be enacted if we all agree sooner rather than later.
Okay, Bill, just let me know that he is joining by conference call. Um, I think we have, I mean, my, I sort of feel like Wayne that we should probably act on the motion and I can second it.
Hi, everybody. Everybody, can you hear, this is Bill, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
You can? Okay, I'm gonna drop off this, I'm just gonna go this way. Um, just in terms of procedurally, you need a motion, a second, and it has to be by unanimous consent. Special meetings are kind of unique. I understand the circumstances, but generally try not to. I mean, is this something that can be addressed with the administration and Jim Fodorko tomorrow, coordinating with them? But regardless, you need the unanimous consent to have the discussion.
I, I don't, I don't think that those, those issues that are brought here, what is the city gonna do?
Well, well, I guess, if there's not gonna be unanimous consent, that's gonna end this discussion and we can go into closed session, so.
Let's end it.
So you can call a roll, you need a motion, Catherine motions, you need a second and a roll call.
We have a second and we have a, to it. Sorry.
Who's second?
Uh, Councilwoman Rosenberg was the second.
And you need to have the unanimous in order for this to be discussed, right?
Yes.
Okay. Hi Bill.
Hey, listen, you know what? Hey, Bill, we, we have Jewel waiting for us to dial in.
But there's a motion on the table, so it needs to be voted one way or another.
I understand that, but she's waiting in the queue and, and, and she would have input on this same thing as well, even though she doesn't vote.
It, it may not be necessary. I think we should proceed with the vote.
Council President Cobb, would you like me to proceed? Would you like me to proceed with the vote?
You can.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn.
Yes.
Councilman Hamer.
I don't think this is a proper forum. I think it can be dealt with, you know, because we don't have a vote on the election and deal with it administratively. My vote is no.
Councilwoman Rosenberg.
I think we need to discuss these things, but we obviously don't have unanimous consent.
This, this, you know, this could be, this could be discussed at the city manager's meeting, and I don't have a problem scheduling another special meeting to discuss these or have these discussed. But this is not why, this is not why I scheduled this meeting.
Can I, can I just make one quick recommendation?
Guys, we can't start having a discussion about it if it's not out of the agenda.
We're not, and that's it.
How about we, move on. Just finish the roll call and then that, that issue's done for right now.
Yeah, right. Let's finish the roll call. My vote is no. Move on, Bill, take us into closed session.
Okay, so just for the record, the motion failed, required unanimous consent, and that can be revisited as you guys see fit. Okay, so just for the record, the motion failed, it required unanimous consent, um, and that can be revisited as you guys see fit. Um, I'm, I could do the motion to be going to closed, uh, be resolved by the governing body of the city of Englewood that, with the closed session to discuss matters permitted under, to be discussed in a closed session under the Open Public Meetings Act, specifically matters pertaining to personnel, hiring and appointments, uh, litigation and the attorney client privilege, and be a further resolved that discussion conducted in a closed session can be disclosed to the public upon taking final action thereon, provided it does not constitute non-identity-based privacy or violate the attorney client privilege. And be a further resolved that although the council will return to open session, it is not envisioned that it will take any formal action at that time. Need a motion and a second, and then a vote.
Second.
Who was the first, who was the motion, I'm sorry?
So, Haymer first.
And the second was?
I seconded.
Okay, did you need a roll call or all in favors, fine?
All in favors, fine.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
We're in closed session.
All right, if the council members can please leave this meeting and join us on the teleconference number that I sent you.
So we're just going on to the call?
Yeah.
Hi, Dan.
We have to go, we have to go on to the call now, right?
I, yeah.
Okay.
Michael. Michael, you have to leave this meeting.
Right, it's not letting me on the call.
Because probably everyone's calling at the same time, you gotta leave this meeting first, though.
Okay, bye.
Bye. Thank you, everyone, hang on, we won't be too long.
Should be muted. Why aren't you muted?
Oh, I just unmuted myself just to let you know I was here.
Oh, okay.
I can mute myself, though.
Really? No one should have that ability.
Okay. Yeah, see, we want to go back into...
All right. I'm gonna take everybody off the ability to unmute themselves. So if anybody wants to speak, use the raise your hand function.
Right. But we got to move back into open session.
Yes. Oh, so I should... I'm gonna unmute everybody.
You got to unmute everybody.
Okay. All right, everybody's unmuted. All right.
We're going to go back into open session. Need a motion to go back in open session?
So moves.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good. Thank you. So we're back in open session? Bill?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
They just need to open for public comment.
Now we open it. The floor for public comment now.
Hang on. Let me give me a second. All right, Mr. Cobb. All right, if anyone wishes to speak, do use the raise your hand function, please.
Do we have anybody on the line?
We have a few people, not many.
Okay. Tell them they have two minutes to speak if they choose to speak.
Anybody wishes, any member of the public wishes to...
To speak? You have two minutes. Name, address, and whatever your public comment is at this time.
Just use the raise your hand function so that I can see you. That's under... If you go under reactions, if you see reactions... Oh, Peter, are you raising your hand? Diane? Yes. Okay. All right, Diane wishes to speak. I'm gonna unmute you. Mr. Cobb, is that okay?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm gonna start the timer for two minutes.
Hi, Diane Johnson, 589 Ridgeland Terrace. I just wanted to thank everyone for all the communications that have come out from the city manager's office, from Jewel, as well as from Catherine Melendez, and from the city council that we have, and from the mayor, and that we have been able to post. People have been very receptive to the communications on Facebook, on the one group that I manage, and I just wanted to say thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comment. Diane, just one quick... Just continue to remind people to go to the city's website for the press releases and updates of information that the city's pushing out, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Again, to members of the public who are present, if you go to reactions at the bottom of your screen, there's a raise hand function there. Press that, and we'll see if you'd like to speak. Not getting anyone.
Well... I guess we can close the public session since we haven't gotten anyone. And I would just like to thank all the members of the council and the mayor for getting together tonight. And Nancy, I guess we can...
I've unmuted everybody so you could do the adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Be safe, everybody. Have a good evening.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.